This live stream thing looks a lot different. Since the last time I went live. Well. Who? Hello, comma, can you please let me know who this is, period? I don't have your name saved, period. Hey Heather. How's it going? Yeah, I was just kind of sitting here and I was getting a little tired. I was like, I should go live, doing some office work. So I figured I would just do a little live sesh. See what the new YouTube live is all about while I wrap up some office work. And um. Yeah, and answer any questions anybody has. I'm just here in the office right now. Oh. Failing. Okay, comma, I will look at my calendar, period. I'm tied up all day Saturday. With book club and the Christmas party, period. But I might actually have some time in between. Book club ends at 11:00. And I don't know what time the church Christmas party is, period. I do talk to text you guys. That's how I communicate with everything. So if you ever get a message from me and you're like, that doesn't make sense. It's because I had to talk to text. What's up? What you got going on? I uh, just had a strategy session this morning, actually, well, all day, actually. I did um, coffee chat in my female entrepreneur group. Then after that, we had a strategy session for she built that to figure out what our topics are going to be for each month. And then I'm having, I don't know if I've shared this, but I'm having a personal website built and I just don't know what to write. And so I've enlisted somebody to come help me write the copy. So that's what we were working on today. But okay, questions. Um, let me see if I can click on your question. Go to channel, pin message. I don't want to report you. I don't want to put you in timeout. Okay, so with StreamYard, when somebody comments, I can put it on the screen, but I can't do that here. Alright, so duty Dodger says, your latest video, you mentioned a ton of leads are coming in. Is that due to running ads? Yes. Yes, I was running Facebook and Google Ads. I quit running my Facebook ads. I paused them. Because we wanted to make a couple of changes and I kind of wanted to work on the process of which we are following up with the lead. And so I got in touch with my girl Kelly. She's like really, really good with closing leads, like she did sales overseas. And so she actually had a strategy session with me and my assistant yesterday. To talk about sales and talk about all of that stuff. Um, so yeah, we had a bunch of leads that were coming in. Especially this time of the season, right? So in in spring rush, the first quarter, a lot of people, there's higher demand, people need the service. So they're going to be searching for it more. When you're going into like the summer and fall, stuff like that, the search volume isn't quite as high. That's why Facebook is super valuable because you're you're getting pushed out there to cold audiences to create awareness about this service. Um, when you are just running Google Ads, which I think you should do them in tandem, right? People are specifically going to Google looking for dog poop removal services. So that's why it's good to run them both, um, both at the same time, along with, you know, creating organic content, just creating hype and letting people know like, hey, this service is available. So yeah, long story long is yeah, running ads. Let me look to see. Let me pull up good old Jabber. We haven't had a lot that came in this month because I uh, I pulled them, but we're going to kick them back up. Um, insights, insights, insights. So year to date, how many have we had year to date? So year to date, I've had 1,032 leads that have come in year to date. How many came in last year? Let me look at last year and then I'll. Well, let me look at last month first. Last month was 56. Fifty-six new leads came in last month. Amazing. How is your close rate improved and have you converted those one-time cleans into monthly from running ads last time? It's actually a really good question. I'd have to look up my Excel spreadsheet to see how many new customers we brought on. That's one thing that Jabber doesn't show easily is like, how many new customers did we pick up? But here's what I can tell you. I had fifty out of the fifty-six new leads that came in, we did twenty-three of those as one-off jobs and we converted eight, eighteen of them. We converted eighteen into into reoccurring. So fifty-three leads came in. We did twenty-three as one-off jobs. So okay, let me explain this. So whenever somebody comes into us, we always schedule their first job. In Jobber is always a one-off job. And here's why. So either they're coming for a one-time visit, one time, that's it. Then we don't convert them, or they are coming on as reoccurring, but that first visit is their initial visit. And so I set that up as a one-time job in Jobber. So it closes out that day. Um, I can set up the invoice, prorate the invoice for the remainder of the month, whatever that looks like behind the scenes. And then when it closes out, review harvest kicks in and asks that customer for a review. If I were to just set the customer up with a reoccurring visit for the next seven to ten years, that's typically how we set that up in Jobber, then review harvest wouldn't be able to ask them for a review. So this is why I set up as one time. So we did, yeah, so twenty-three of them were one-time jobs and then we converted eighteen of those. So eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three. So five of the twenty-three did not convert, eighteen did. So yeah. Hopefully that makes sense. Yeah. Hi Fly Sparrow, thanks for hanging. Sup Daniels in the house? I gotta get you on the podcast again. Is this spiritual live? I don't know. I don't know what that means. I was just bored. I was just sitting here and I was actually getting a little sleepy. And I was like, you know what? I want to start doing more lives. But I don't plan them out and I don't like to do them at night. And so I was like, let's just hang out. Why not? I'm not scared. How did you convert them after their one time? So basically what we do is, is when they first come in, when they say they just want a one-time clean, this is Nina. Nina right now is doing all of the sales right now and I'm kind of like overseeing it. Um, because spring rush is going to be absolutely crazy and there's going to have to be two of us. So um, I had, I had to get somebody trained that can handle this workflow with me when it goes crazy. Cause let me look, let me go back to last custom range. I spent roughly fifteen thousand dollars on ads during spring rush last year. This year, sorry. January, so between January and April 1st, let's just say January and April 1st, we got five hundred and eighty-five leads that came in. So March is our like heaviest year or our heaviest month. And so it's insane. So yeah, we got a lot of leads, a lot of leads that came in. Just up until April and then April, we had a nice flow and I can't handle all of that by myself. I can't do it. And back to how do we convert them? You know, when they come in, they say they want a one-time clean. That's when we just start having a conversation, like a discovery conversation, like, oh, why do you want a one-time clean? You know, we do offer weekly and bi-weekly service. You know, how often are you going out there? You just kind of get to know them and then let them know, say, hey, we offer these services. And if they just say, oh, no worries. I just want the one-time clean. We do the clean. We show them the wonderful experience. We thank them. And then we pitch them again before we close them out and thank them like, hey, we really appreciate you allowing us to do your one-time clean. I really think it would be beneficial for us to service your property either weekly or bi-weekly due to the amount of waste that we found. And Nina has been doing a really good job converting. She really has. It's just really about the conversations and too, like with Google, right? Your Google leads are going to be more more qualified and more verified. Because those people specifically went to Google to look for your services. They know what they want. It's just a matter of how fast you're going to get back to them and can you solve their problem type deal? And pricing sometimes is an issue. Don't get me wrong, because my prices are a little bit higher. But as long as we share the value with them, a lot of times from the numbers they're showing, we're able to convert. Um, Facebook's a little different as they're kind of like tire kickers. You have to be more intentional. You kind of have to work them a little bit more. Find out if they're just price shopping. If they've ever used a service before, because if they're comparing you to a neighborhood kid that will scoop for ten dollars and you're like, yeah, we, I'll scoop your yard for twenty-seven fifty per week. They're like stunned, like they gasp. They're upset. Hey Rusty. I am from Michigan. I'm from the Mitten. Where are all you from? Put your states. Location check. Yeah. Alright, so after the one-time clean, we price their service. Right now, I flat rated my prices because I decided to make things as simple as possible this past year because I had to rebuild. Rebuild the business after the chaos that happened last year with all the vehicle accidents and me losing my freaking mind. Um, I flat rated my prices to a hundred dollars a month for weekly service. And we come out one time a week and that's from one to four dogs for one eighth of an acre. That has been converting quite well, quite well. And we just let them know like how much it's going to be. We have been toying with presenting it weekly price versus monthly price. I don't have the data to back up like which one's better. But we are going to bump our prices probably up to one-ten or up to one-twenty per month, I'm thinking. Cause I got this really cool Excel spreadsheet that got built out for me. And I've been nerding out, like I've been a little silent on my other social medias. Because I've been going into Jabber. Auditing the, okay, so let me backtrack. Okay, so you have your customers and you service them every single week, right? And with Jabber, we log in, log out. The same thing with Sweeping Go. You log in, you log out of a job. So you can see how long it's been taking you. So what we've been doing is we take the past ten visits. We take the times and then divide that by ten to give us an average time of how average, how long we're taking to services property from start to finish. And this was the other issue that I realized, one of my scoopers was clocking in right when they arrived to the house. And then one of my other scoopers was clocking in when they got into the backyard and they were clocking out after they sent the closed gate photo. So they weren't accounting for um, putting the dog poop in the trash can. They weren't accounting for sending the text message with a closed gate. They weren't accounting for uh, cleaning their utensils and cleaning their boots. And then also, um, is that it? I think that's it. And if a customer like stop them and talk to them. So I'm like looking at their drive time, which comes up as general time in the system. I said, why is half of the shift being spent driving around? I said, that can't be right. And so I was working with my mentor and so that's what he's having me do. So then I can go through and say like, okay, this is how much time this is actually taking. If I want my business to make a hundred and ten dollars per man hour and it's taking us this long, this is the the hourly rate that my business is running at. I have this whole like Excel spreadsheet built out for me and I'm going through customer by customer by customer. So then next year I can do a proper rate increase to make sure all of our houses are hitting that one-ten man hour. Anyway, and man hour is just subjective to your business. I have a lot of overhead because I am in expansion mode. Like adding new fleet vehicles, putting, I'm putting thirty thousand dollars into advertisement this upcoming year. What else are we going to do? I'm going to add another employee. I want to add two more employees. That's, that's the kind of stuff that I've been working on. Oh, hold on a second. Did I answer your question? How I price them? Yeah, I, I have my pricing metrics and I just give them, I give them the price. Okay. You're in Carolina, Stockton, Carolina. Cool. Alright, Daniel, one-twenty per every four weekly or two-nine-nine quarterly also reduces churn. The quarterly billing does work. I offered a very steep deal, very steep. Um, I did for Black Friday, I, I did buy three months, get one free. Mm-hmm. I'm live on YouTube. My husband says, hi YouTube. You gonna come say hi? I have new laundry. It's day three of my husband being laid off. He's gotten all of his laundry done. Very good, very good. Anyways, quarterly billing. Um, yeah, I want to do quarterly billing. I want to offer that. I think that that's going to be something that we definitely do launch next year. Shout out to Big Crouppen. Come and say hi. Don't be shy. He says, I'm busy. Don't make me turn this laptop around. Don't make me turn this laptop around. Our bed's made, so it's proper. Anyways, what do you have going on today? What's your weather like too, by the way? We got snow, we got rain, this wind is whipping through. I, I feel, I'm so grateful for my scoopers. That they, dude, they're OG, they're Gs, man. Ooh, what if you only have a hundred dollars to start? How would you start to get customers? We're trying to start. Soliciting?
Walking down the street and a dog barking at you, knock on their door.
Yeah. I mean, this is what my husband said. He said, if you have no money, you got a hundred bucks. Walk down the street. If you see a dog barking, go knock on their door. Will you close that door for a minute? We're, there's some more nuances to that. We'll talk about that in a minute.
Howdy.
I love you so much. Okay, so if we were to piggyback off on that, let's talk about door knocking because door knocking essentially is going to be relatively inexpensive, but you have to like put yourself out there. If I were to door knock, this is what I would do. I would get a uniform, a polo shirt, hot pink polo shirt or hot, whatever your color is, a shirt, look professional. Okay, get yourself a nice pair of pants. Have a business card, have a simple business card made on business print. You can find coupons. You can get five hundred business cards for pretty cheap. And go, I would go, yeah, go and door knock. Just, hi, my name's Erica. I'm new, I'm a new business in the area. I offer dog poop removal services. I hear that you have a dog. If you're ever in need, I would love to take care of your yard. I'm local here, so you know, give me a call anytime. Something along, along the lines of that, like have a little pitch, nothing crazy, nothing awkward. And then also, I would do all of the free things. I would get my Facebook business page up and running. I would get my Google business profile up and running. And then I didn't have a lot of money to start. And so this is, this is why this whole YouTube thing exists, because I have my phone. And I just started creating content. I just started creating videos. I just started sharing the process, the behind the scenes, the pros and the cons. And just put it out there. Like here it is. Make fun of me if you want. I don't care. Like I'm scooping dog poop. Yeah, I used to work at a hospital and it was like respected. And yes, I sold jewelry and now I'm like scooping dog poop. I don't know why. It just sounded like a good idea. So it is what it is. It's just what I'm doing now. Um. And if I were to start all over again and I didn't have money to do it, that's, that's exactly what I would do. A lot of people don't want to door knock. They do not want to do it. But if you do some door knocking in specific areas, get those business cards in the vet offices that are like local to that neighborhood. So you want to be strategic when you don't have money either, right? So if you're like, alright, I want to target this neighborhood. Where's the couple local vet offices and dog offices, dog offices, dog um, companies around there where you can have your business cards? You can join the local Facebook groups with your personal page and with your business page. And then you're also door knocking. So the people are kind of there, like starting to see you time and time again. You know, with a hundred bucks, there's, there's not much there. I mean, it costs fifty dollars to get an LLC. You know, you have to start like super, super scrappy. But yeah, social media, knocking, just talking with people, having those conversations, doing things that are so uncomfortable where you literally just want to crawl out of your skin. You're like, oh, I don't want to do that. But a lot of people won't do that. And so that will be an advantage to you. Oh my, get a dog whistle, blow it and knock on every door you hear a dog. That's interesting. That's interesting. Hey, new scooper here in Baton Rouge. How should I nerd out on terms of service, worst case scenario type of stuff before I officially launch? I think you should have, well, let me pull up mine. You definitely want to have your payment. You want to have your, how your billing is going to work, very clear. Because if you don't have money, you can't run your business. Be very, very clear in your billing. Secondly, I would define your dog policy and procedure. Will you allow the dogs out when you scoop or will you not? Hauling of the dog poop. What are you going to do with the dog poop? Is the dog poop going to come with you? Or are you going to double bag it, single bag it, whatever? Put it in the whole Mars trash can. What does that look like for you? Um, your weather policy. What is your weather policy? For us, I had to define that because it's like, what does determine unsafe weather, right? So I had to define like in the wintertime, uh, freezing rain, wrote the main roads unsafe to drive on. Um, like a torrential downpour. Um, when the snow is two inches or greater during one snow event, we shut down. Um, below freezing temperatures, that's too unsafe to work in. Um, heat, when the heat index is at a certain level and the risk of heat stroke, because we scoop so many houses, like being out there, the risk of heat stroke, we might not go out. I will say this though, we do not cancel, we do not cancel many days. We try to push and pull as much as possible. Even like today, like the weather's not ideal, but we're not canceling. Couple reasons why. My team does not want to work this weekend because if they cancel, they're going to have to work the weekend. And we're going to be shutting down between Christmas and New Year's. So we're going to take a whole week off. And I was like, hey, let's try to keep things as consistent as possible because I don't want any like, you know, I don't want anybody mad or like you, you had to cancel for two days and then now you're shutting down for a week. Um, that's the other thing. Define your holidays, define your holidays. We don't work Thanksgiving, the day after on Friday. We shut down the Tuesday before Christmas or like the day before Christmas Eve. And then we are shut down that entire time until after New Year's. And we're spending time with our families and we're going to enjoy that time. So yeah. Well, you just ordered two thousand business cards today. What's your plan? What's your plan with those business cards? Um, am I familiar with Ryan who took over PSA? Will you have him on? He sold his business in six months after growing to two hundred and seventy-eight customers. I am not familiar with Ryan um, with that. So that's good. That's awesome that he did that. That's really cool. That's cool. Oh yeah, I told you I was going to pull up my my policies and procedures. So in Jabber, my policies and procedures go out in an email every single week to the customer. It's attached to their email reminder because they'll get a reminder at eight AM. They'll get an email and they will get a text message reminder and I attach my policies and procedures to the email. So if they're ever like, I didn't know that. I didn't see that. You never told me that. I'll be like, I've actually told you forty-seven times this year. Check your email. Check your email. Jamie, have you door knocked before? I've done it minimally. My brother uh, sold meat door to door and he was giving me some tips about door knocking. I think it's something that we are I know for a fact it's something that we're going to start doing, but we're going to be super intentional about it. This is kind of the strategy that I learned from the poop scoop millionaire, which I want to piggyback off of it. So what I did was, is I I looked in Jabber, like I looked at my main map to see where we have the most customers. Cause I can look at all the customers that we've serviced over the past five years that I've been using Jabber. over the past five years that I've been using jobber. And I'm like looking at the neighborhoods, I'm looking at the areas that are pretty dense. So what we're gonna do is, is I'm gonna pick a small area and we're going to put up lots of yard signs strategically. We're gonna do the door hangers and do the door knocking. I'm also gonna go to those vet offices and other like doggy daycares. Um, anywhere that I could put those cards at, I'm gonna put those cards. And then also I want to build some relationships with those people and make sure I'm involved in like that local chamber of commerce. Some mistakes that I have made in the past is I've tried to just do too much at once. Like I'm in this chamber and I'm, then I'm in this chamber clear across town. And then I'm over here and it's just like, I'm too, I'm like way too all over the place and then I get burnout. And then I'm not getting the return that I want. It's because I'm, I'm too, it's just too far spread. So basically, it's like, okay. My ads are gonna do the far reach for me. I'm gonna pick a specific area and I'm just gonna dedicate the next year to that area. And then I'm gonna be in business the next year. And then I'll keep doing that and doing that. Because it's like, okay, you spent one week targeting, targeting an area or maybe you spent one quarter. It's still not enough time. And that's what I'm learning as, as time goes on in this business that I want that instant gratification. I want it now. Like I want these customers now. Take a deep breath. Okay? It takes some time to nurture the relationships. And I think that was a really hard lesson for me to learn is you know, just quit comparing yourself to other people and get like hyper focused. And and now that I can see the data and I can see like, you know, what where we've been growing and where we're not growing, um, I'm like, okay, there's opportunity here. This is what we need to do. Okay, I got distracted again. Yes, and pressure washing, I still do. I door knock and my kids put out door hangers. So I've been thinking I go out half scoopers and pressure washing for advertising. Yeah. I just got a book called Zip Code Kings by, I believe his name is um Jonas, Jonas Olsen. From what I hear, it's a very, very good book. I just got the book yesterday. I haven't had a chance to read it. But he grew his pest control business quite large to several, several locations. And he wrote a book and he talked about how he dominates the zip codes. And I met him back in, I want to say it was October. And hearing that and then watching one of um one of William's presentations over in the poop scoop millionaire community, talking about the yard signs and and how you need to put like like, I think he said like a hundred, like a hundred and like a s- um, a square mile radius. Don't quote me on that. It might be less, it might be more, but like each square mile needs to have, you know, a certain amount of yard signs. And it got me thinking about the zip codes and it just kind of clicked. It was like, yeah. Okay, that's, that's how we're gonna move forward. That's how we're gonna be more strategic with that. I have not added any additional services yet. No, I just, we just scoop. We just scoop the dog poop. Every year I keep talking about sanitation. I'm like, this is the year. We're gonna do it. We're gonna add sanitation. I haven't. We might be missing a big opportunity, but now that I have more help and I have more money to like actually pay people to help, I think I'll be in better shape. Because I do hear it's quite good, even if it's like a um what is it, like an add-on or like a lead magnet where if you sign up, you'll get a, you know, a free spray with your initial cleaning, something like that. But I was also struggling on the product that I wanted to use too. Because I, I had Wizy Wash. I didn't I'm not saying that I didn't enjoy it. I just didn't like that I had to like hook it up to people's power source. And then I had to have the hose and then I had to drain the unit out. Make sure I don't get the solution on our clothes because it'll bleach. Then I was like, okay, well, I want to get an enzymatic product that is a more natural that like actually eats up the um the bacteria. But then it's like, what product do I use? There's so many products. I get overwhelmed. Stop it. Probably GTA six, probably GTA ten before I launch sanitizing. We were just so blessed this year. You know, last year things were just kind of like getting wild. And so it was just so, so amazing to rebuild the business back to where it is right now and like ending the year. Like I'm very excited for next year. You can look up Justice Map and it will show you how much are people making income. So it will help you find your customers, what area they are at. Um, Jamie, question. What is the average household income in your main service area? Actually, I have that question for all of you. Do you know what your average income is? Because I don't, I'm gonna look mine up right now. While we're chatting. The party is from five to seven. Hold on, you guys, I gotta look at my calendar. I got a question. Twelve thirty. Okay, comma, my, my power hour and book club will be done at twelve thirty period. What if we went over there at like one thirty or two, question mark? One of the women from our church had a baby and I want to go see the baby. So I live in Westland and it says that the typical average household income is around seventy six thousand to seventy seven thousand household income. Okay, and then my second most busiest city is Garden City and that is seventy eight thousand. So that's pretty close. Yeah. Seventy eight thousand. Alright, I have to get off in two minutes. It's time for me to wind down. And I have a podcast interview that I'm doing tomorrow, so I have to send him over the, the stream yard link before I forget. I'm excited to chat with him. Um, I believe his name is Ken. Let me just double check. So Ken is actually one of our community members. Let me just double, yeah, Ken. So he's one of our community members and um Kelly has kind of like helped him with sales and stuff. And he's grown his business like quick, like he's got a bunch of customers. I was like, well, let's chat about how you grow so quick. And then we're gonna have Kelly on the podcast to talk about the strategic, like what it is that she's doing to get people to grow and to close these jobs. Um, how much is it for the community? Um, what community? My community or the poop scoop millionaire community? Because I have a, I have a ladies community where it's all females. And it's biblically based and we talk about business. The poop scoop millionaire is for pooper scoopers. Just pooper scoopers. And I'd have to look to see how much that is because I'm not exactly sure. My community is like very cheaply priced right now. I'm just gonna pepper that out there because we didn't like I just wanted to have it a little bit lower for right now. And then it's jumping up drastically next month. Drastically next month. The pooper scripper community is drum roll please. Dun, da, da, dun. Sixty nine dollars a month for the poop scoop millionaire community. You, I believe if you pay for it all at once, you get a discount. Like if you pay for the entire year, you get a discount. Yeah, there's a lot of good stuff in here. Um, I have to go through the hiring um classroom again that Levi made because I'm gonna be hiring again. And every single time I go to hire, I don't know what goes on, but I'm like brand new. I don't know what to do. I'm like, wait, what? How do I hire? Probably because I don't hire that often. Like I haven't hired since May, May, June, July, August, September, October, November, December. It's been eight months. It's been a while, a little rusty. But alright, I'm gonna head out. I appreciate you hanging out with me. Um. Should I do more of these? I know I should. I shouldn't even ask that question. I will do more of these, I promise. Because these are fun. I like that we get to chit chat. I was thinking that if I do stream yard, I might actually be able to bring you on. Like, if you have a camera, you might actually be able to join the stream. I think so, because that would be might be a little wild. But I think it could be fun. We could have some fun there. Okay. Alright, well, cool. I appreciate you. Have a good day. Bye.